All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Going to go ahead and call to order the February 9th, 2015 legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. Welcome. Thank you for joining us this evening. Just a few quick announcements. If you wouldn't mind turning your cellphones off or setting those on vibrate, we would appreciate it. For those of you joining us for the first time, and I don't think there are many, our emergency exits are out the door to your right, and then a right, and you'll find the stairs. Secondary exit is out the door to your right, and then a left past the elevator. With us this evening, we have Dr. Bill Warren, the Senior Pastor of Allen Memorial Baptist Church, to deliver the city invocation. Dr. Warren, if you wouldn't mind coming forward. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. Lord, I thank you for the political courage displayed by this city council in their decision to invite your participation in each of their public meetings. It takes a lot of courage, it takes a lot of conviction, and I thank you for it. Lord, bless them in their willingness to run counter to the flow of our culture. And, Lord, you have the wisdom to answer every question that will face them this evening. You have the wisdom for every decision they'll have to make. Please grant them your answers and give them your wisdom. Grant them also your patient graciousness as they listen to concerns brought before them tonight, and lead those who address them to speak the truth in love and speak their minds with respect. Above all, Lord, may you be honored by the way business is conducted in this room tonight, and may every decision accord with your perfect will, in the strong name of Jesus Christ, and for his sake I pray. Amen.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again, Dr. Warren. This evening, we have a good friend, Dr. Andrea Bursler, Andrea Bursler, excuse me, just gave you a doctor.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Andrea Bursler, the Director of the Wycomico Public Library, with us. Andrea, if you wouldn't mind coming forward, she's going to talk about the Light of Literacy Awards. Do you need me to operate this?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Let's find out how tech savvy I am.
Thank you, council members, for allowing us to have this opportunity to talk to you for a few minutes about the Friends of the Library. I want to introduce two of our Friends members who are here. Susan Bowens, Susan, who is the Chair of our Friends Member of the Library Board, and Audrey Orr, who is the Chair for this event, Literacy Awards, and will be joining me in just a minute to talk a little about this year's event. The packet of information that you've received is a Friends membership, so you have a little bit of information about the Friends, and hopefully we'll see your name on those membership rolls. But the paper that you received is about the awards for Light of Literacy. Light of Literacy recognizes luminaries, we call them, people whose actions demonstrate a deep understanding of the transformational power of literacy in the lives of those in our community. This event is, this is a third annual event, and we look forward to it growing. It's grown every year. Jake, could you? The goals for the Literacy Awards are to raise awareness of the positive literacy-based programs currently in our community. We're not looking to start new programs, we're looking to recognize ones that exist. We want to recognize the individuals who make those programs work. By doing these two things, the Friends hope, their desire, is to maximize the impact of these programs by increasing volunteerism and support, donations, and improved community support for those programs. So we're, we're basically creating a stage and a spotlight, and we're putting it on these, these programs, so that hopefully they get some more community awareness, raise community awareness for them. There are six awards, and these are actually a picture of what the awards look like. They're, they're pretty snazzy. We're pretty proud of them. And if you hit the next one, then. Two awards are for individuals. There's a youth award, which is for individuals up to age 18, and there's an adult award, which is someone 18 and over. These are both for actions demonstrating leadership, a commitment to the community, literacy-based initiatives such as helping people learn how to use computers, helping people learn to read, helping people learn to manage finances. There's all kinds of literacies that we're looking to, looking to recognize. The next two awards are for education. One is for the educator, for birth to, anyone working with students from birth to 12th grade, so it could be preschool, it could be elementary, middle school, or high school. And the other one is higher ed, which is someone who works, teaches, or attends formal post-high school instruction. So it could be a technical school, could be a community college, could be a university. And the idea here is to tie in, to tie in education with literacy. So it could be someone, again, who's instructing students on how to utilize technology or computers to improve their lives. The last pair are organizational awards. We have a business award, and that's for a for-profit organization, and a nonprofit organizational award. As, as an example, last year's organizational award went to the United Way because they sponsored the Imagination Library Program. The business award, we, we gave to Starbucks because they promote literacy through sponsorship of Storytime at the library. But it could be that they support their staff in volunteering in the community, it could be that they, as an organization, sponsor or, or underwrite the costs of a program, or that they do something else in the community that helps with literacy. On that note, we define literacy as the ability to take in information and use that information to impact your life in a positive way. So that's, it's a very broad-based definition, but what that allows us to do is to recognize people who are helping others understand health information, understand financial information, understand computer information, as well as the traditional literacy of learning to read. These are all life skills that are important in our community, and so therefore, we want to make sure that, that the work that, that people are doing, we recognize that. If you'll, these are some of our past winners. I think you'll recognize some of them if you've been in the community for any length of time. We have high school programs, both at Parkside and James &amp; Bennett, Starbucks, Dollar General, J.C.'s. These are individuals that, that go across pretty much almost every group in the community. And what we want to do, as I said, is create a stage and a spotlight, and just for a few minutes, let them talk, show their work, talk about their work, demonstrate the impact of their work. The nominations we receive are competitive, and every year, when the, when the awards selectors get together, it is, it is hard. They go through, they have to pick, you know, someone to win, and it's tough. We, we had one year, we just couldn't, I, I, I think finally, we drew straws or something. I mean, it was just, we were like, let's just do a tie, let's give them both, you know, because these people are doing remarkable things in this community. So if you could hit the last slide, I'm going to ask Audrey, who's this year's Chair, to come on up and talk, just for a few minutes, about what we have planned for this year's Literacy Breakfast.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Andrea mentioned, this is the third year that we've put on this event, and this year I am chairing it. And the emcee for the event will be Phil Tillman, will keep things flowing for us, and Matt Maserello will be our keynote speaker. And I don't know exactly what Matt's going to say, but something tells me he'll be drawing a pretty clear correlation between increased literacy and decreased crime. It's going to be held at the Civic Center this year on April 9th, from 8:00 to 10:00, and we absolutely promise to end on time. Do, main reason for being here tonight in front of you all is to solicit nominations. You know the folks, what they're doing out in the community, what they're accomplishing, who they're reaching. You go to church with them, you attend at school events with them. We want to make sure that we get, reach out to the broadest possible audience. As Andrea referenced, we look on literacy as in the broadest sense. I will share one story with you. Andrea mentioned earlier that the nonprofit award last year went to the United Way of the Lower Eastern Shore, and that was specifically for one of their programs called Imagination Library. And just last week, I was talking with a lady who's a caregiver for someone who has pretty, quite severe mental and physical challenges, and this lady has a three-year-old daughter. And she was telling me, she just happened to see this little postcard that I had just, just been made up, and she was telling me that her daughter is recipient each month of a book from the Imagination Library Program. And her daughter is about three and a half years old, she knows to look in the mailbox for that book, is delighted to have it, she's built her own little personal library. Now, you know, that little girl doesn't know that the United Way won an award for this. Her mother didn't know that the United Way won an award for this, but that's why it's important that we reach out to the community to recognize the entities and the individuals that are providing these kind of wonderful services. Thank you.
Thank you.
So what we really are hoping is that as representatives of the different parts of our community here inside the city limits, the council members and the individuals in attendance here will help us by filling out a nomination form and submitting the name of someone you know who works in one of these literacy fields. They can, they can, it can be their profession, it can be their, their volunteer time, it can be something that's just a passion of theirs, but help us by filling out the nominations and giving us an opportunity to show off what it is that they do in the community. It's important for us, it's important for the Friends, but most important, it's important for our community, to see all the positive things that are going on. So we thank you for this opportunity to, to talk a little about our awards breakfast and all entertain any questions that the council may have.
Andrea, for, for anyone watching on PAC-14 and for the guests in the audience, can you, is there an email address where a nomination can be submitted?
They can, nominations, absolutely. You can, you can pick up nomination forms at the library, of course, but the easiest way to do it is to go to the Light of Literacy website, which is lightofliteracy.org. There's information about the breakfast, the nomination forms are there as a, as a PDF. If you're, if you're computer literate, you could do that. You can print them up, you can either fill them out by hand and bring them by the library, mail them in, you can fill them out online if you feel like you're, you know, up to that challenge, and, or you can, you can email them directly back to the library, to the Friends. It's friends@wycomico.org. If they have any questions at all, there's a button on there for, you know, for them to send an email to us, and we'll get back to them just as quickly as we possibly can.
Are there questions for Ms. Bursler? Thank you so much for joining us.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. All right. Next item on our agenda is the adoption of the legislative agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
All right. Motion second. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to remove Resolution 2471, or some questions from the consent agenda to be heard directly after the consent agenda.
All right, there is an amendment. Is there a second?
Don't need one for that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the legislative agenda as amended, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. I thought we just approved it.
Almost. Ms. Nichols?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The consent agenda items for today include the January 12th, 2015 regular meeting minutes, the January 26 regular meeting minutes. We have a manufacturing exemption request for PolyOne Design Structures and Solutions LLC for equipment purchase 2009 through 2013, and since the request came within two years of the purchase in 2012 and 2013, they're eligible for up to five years exemptions for each year. Over the next five years, they will benefit from this exemption by a total of $28,886 in personal property tax for 2009 through 2013 equipment purchases. We have Resolution Number 2472 authorizing the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding and accept a grant of $40,000 from Maryland State Highway Administration's Recreational Trails Program for the Salisbury Rowing and Kayak Water Access Project. We have Resolution Number 2473 approving the appointment of Marion F. Keenan to the Salisbury Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee for term ending 12/31/2017. Resolution Number 2474 approving the appointment of Michael H. Perry II to the City Park Committee for the term ending 12/31/2017. We have Resolution Number 2475 approving the reappointment of Brian Rager to the Zoo Commission for term ending December 31st, 2017. Resolution Number 2476 approving the appointment of Nancy E. Robertson to the Friends of Poplar Hill Mansion Board of Directors for term ending January 31st, 2018. Resolution Number 2477 approving the reappointment of Scott Saxman to the Historic District Commission for the term ending December 31st, 2017. Resolution Number 2478 approving reappointment of Carol Sissons to the Zoo Commission for term ending December 31st, 2017. And Resolution Number 2479, which is reapproving the reappointment, which is approving the reappointment of Jane Young to the Marina Committee for the term ending January 31st, 2017. And this concludes the items.
All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Do we have a representative of PolyOne Designated Structures and Solutions here? No. We thank them for their investments in our community. What about Marion Keenan, Michael Perry, Brian Rager, Nancy Robertson, Scott Saxman, Carol Sissons, and Jane Young? Can you please stand up? Thank you for your service. Thanks for what you do for our city. We appreciate it.
Jake, I did have one comment on that. In looking at these, I noticed today, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee didn't stagger the terms on that, so we'll need to do something to rectify that as these terms come up, because we just put one more on to end the same time.
They have a meeting tomorrow night.
Okay, so, yeah.
And when we go through, as we go through, as we're doing right now, going through each of the committees and committee, standing committees and commissions and boards, we can address that as we get to that one.
Right. I think that was something that was left out of, it seemed like when we got the list of boards and commissions, it was at the bottom of every other one, but not that one. When we set it up, we just didn't put that piece in there, so we need to rectify that.
That's a good point. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of, excuse me. First, we have Resolution 2471 removed from the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2471.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Do you want me to read that into the record, Mr.
Yes, please, Mr. Stevenson.
Good evening. Resolution 2471 is a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, authorizing the Chief of Police to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Salisbury Police Department, the Maryland Department of Safety, and Correctional Services in Washington College. The purpose of the MOU is to allow Washington College to develop analytical products to aid the Salisbury Police Department in the furtherance of their mission of reducing criminal activity and the enhancement of public safety. Whereas Washington College, in conjunction with the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention, has created the Maryland Crime Mapping and Analysis Program, or CMAP, and the Maryland Offenders Management System, or MOMS. And whereas the Maryland Crime Mapping Analysis Program, CMAP, is designed to provide crime analysis mapping services and other analysis via maps and analysis on, on demand service. And whereas the Maryland Offenders Management System gives law enforcement the ability to search for adults or juveniles on parole or probation and those with open warrants, as well as to access information related to registered sex offenders and other criminal justice data. And whereas the Salisbury Police Department will share crime statistics with Washington College in order for the data to be entered into the Maryland Crime Mapping and Analysis Program, as well as the Maryland Offenders Management System. And whereas the Salisbury Police Department will have the ability to share and receive information with other criminal justice agencies that have access to the information entered into both CMAP and MOMS, as well as other criminal justice agencies. And I think that's one of the issues that the councilwoman will raise, maybe just the wording there. And whereas entering into the MOU with the Maryland Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services in Washington College will be of no cost to the police department, and whereas the work that the Maryland Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services in Washington College accomplishes with the data that the Salisbury Police Department will provide will lead to enhanced police ability to address public safety concerns. Now, for there to be resolved by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the police chief is authorized to sign and enter into an MOU with the Maryland Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services and Washington College to share criminal statistics data for the purpose of crime reduction and prevention. Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you. Yeah, the first, with regard to the ordinance, line 30, that whereas that begins on line 30, it makes two references to criminal justice agencies, and I read it over and over and over again, and I'm thinking that maybe one of them, Major Minechine, I'm sorry, Colonel Minechine, well, Chief's hiding back there, too. One of them maybe should be other databases, or am I just misreading this? It was confusing.
Chief, you want to come to podium, please?
Either, either way, it's, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Line 30, you say?
Yeah, the whereas that begins on line 30, "Since the Salisbury Police Department will have the ability to share and receive information with other criminal justice agencies that have access to the information entered into both CMAP and MOMS, as well as other criminal justice agencies," should, are we talking about databases here for one of those? I'm just not clear what it means.
I, I don't think it should be databases. I think it's an exchange that washes through Washington College, so maybe that second indication of other criminal justice agencies got, maybe juxtaposed with, with incoming, outgoing information sharing, and I could definitely follow up on that. I'd have to look at the, the MOU.
At this point, I think the reference to other criminal justice agencies on line 32 is just superfluous.
That's what I was thinking, but if it's, if it's meant to cover both directions, the flow in both directions, it may not be.
Well, but, in, on line 30, in line 31, it says, "Share and receive information with other criminal justice agencies," so it would still be superfluous.
So just wipe out as well as other criminal agencies?
Well, it's, it's, it's speaking to those criminal justice agencies that don't have access to CMAP and MOMS is the second reference to criminal justice agencies. So this information can be shared to, with agencies that are not necessarily hooked up with CMAP and MOMS, and they are specified here. Is that what I read here, Chief?
I believe that interpretation is correct. I'm just going through the MOU now to find out.
I see your point, Mr. Spees. I think it could probably still be tightened up.
I mean, I've read it like 10 times, and I, I just, it wasn't comfortable, so I knew there was something not right, I didn't put my finger on what it was.
I mean, frankly.
I'm not sure we're clear about what we're authorizing.
Frankly, the sentence could end on line 31 with the word agencies, and it would cover everything.
I think that would be acceptable.
Okay.
Want to make a motion to that effect? I will, if you like.
I will, yes.
All right. End the paragraph with a semicolon after the word agencies on line 31.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Here should the word "and" be after that?
The "and" should remain at the end.
The "and" should.
So we'll strike from that to the second agencies.
Right.
Thank you.
Chief, that meets the intent of that paragraph, you think?
I believe it still does, yes.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of the amendment as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
There were a number of questions that I had about the body of the MOU. In one instance, it talks about, I'm not going to get into all those right now, it talks about their, on their request, but it's not clear who "their" is because it's referencing several parties and that. But in discussing it with Mr. Tillman just now, he said that if we are authorizing the signature of the MOU, that they can fix those things before it's, it's sent for signatures, if council's comfortable with that, so we don't have to go through every one of them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
You guys are comfortable with that.
This is a reiteration of something we've done before with Washington College, is it not?
It is, and it's very similar to a separate database that we also participate in as well. Very similar.
Thank you, Chief. Anything else? Any other comments, questions, concerns? All right. All those in favor of Resolution 2471 as amended, please signify your support by saying aye. And Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Miller?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
We have one item on the award of bids tonight. It's for Contract 106-15. It's for the Caprice Patrol Vehicles. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Salisbury Police Department to solicit bids for Contract 106-15, the 2014 model Caprice Patrol Vehicles. The contract called for seven new Model 2014 sedan V6 Caprice Police Patrol Vehicles with upfitting accessories installed. Four of the seven require the installation of a prisoner cage. The procurement department followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times, on the City of Salisbury's website, utilizing the city's vendor list, and advertising on the state of Maryland's website, eMarylandMarketplace. A total of two vendors submitted a bid by the due date and time of December 17th, 2014, at 2:30 PM. IG Burton in the amount of $227,088, and Hetrick Fleet Services in the amount of $244,345. IG Burton was the apparent low bidder. The bid documents were reviewed by the procurement department, and IG Burton was determined to be the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. The city's past experience with purchasing vehicles from IG Burton has been positive, thereby supporting the recommendation of the Salisbury Police Department to award the bid to IG Burton. The 2014 Caprice vehicles, completely outfitted per the bid specifications, have a delivery lead time of 45 to 75 days after receipt of order. Funds are available in the noted account in your memo. The procurement department requests council's approval to award Contract 106-15, 2014 Caprice Patrol Vehicles, to IG Burton in the amount of $227,088.
Thank you. Ms. Miller? Questions or comments from council?
I'll just share a question that I had with the rest of the council. The budget that we approved last year, the original request was for eight vehicles, two SUVs, and six Caprice vehicles. This was for seven Caprices, but we already got one SUV. Was it Maryland State Police, correct, I believe? And my question was, we had, we saw some savings, the cost of per vehicle was lower than what we had budgeted. I think we budgeted 42, and they came in at, or 48, and they came in at 32. So, no, 42. Anyway, we ended up with enough savings to have almost enough to buy two more. So my question was, are we going to buy additional Caprice vehicles, or what are we going to do with that? Major Minechine got back to me today, thank you for that.
Colonel Minechine.
Colonel, I'm sorry, it was Major for a long time, I'm sorry. I don't mean to keep demoting you. Colonel Minechine got back to me today and said that the hope is to, to be able to get that second SUV that, with the remaining funds. So we actually came out ahead, we got seven Caprice vehicles instead of six, and, and should hopefully end up with two SUV, or utility vehicles as well, to replace the ones that are wearing out. with two SUV or utility vehicles as well, to replace the ones that are wearing out. I'm sorry, one? But didn't we get one from Maryland State Police? Or some, somebody, the task force or something? Okay, I thought this was going to put us at two.
Gang unit.
The gang unit, okay. So we would have two, but only one out of the budget. Yes, please.
The SUV that you are referring to is the unmarked vehicle that's being utilized by members assigned to the gang task force. This particular SUV would be used as a patrol supervisor car and would be a marked unit.
Okay, so there is still going to remain that need for a second SUV.
Yes.
Replacement. Okay. That's, that was my remaining. The only other comment that I have personally, and I think other members may agree with me, there was some mention of a need for maybe a little bit of additional money in that, coming from other police accounts, and I don't have any problem with that, as long as it's not from the money that we put in for additional personnel.
Oh, no, this was, this would come out of equipment accounts, not for, not from personnel accounts. And you're talking about the in-car computer and the in-car camera system.
Okay. Yeah, it was just, we have 56 left and the cost was up to 60, like 52 to 60. So it may be enough, it may be just a little bit shy. That was just my only caveat that I wanted to put out there.
Understood, and I think that it is going to come up a little shy, but still, we have, we have funds in various equipment lines that we can transfer over and accommodate that.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Other questions or comments from council? The only question I have is for Ms. Miller. In this, in this procurement contract, did we, or in the bid process, did we use our veteran small or local business preferences in this?
No, we did not.
We did not?
No. I believe, like, both companies actually can, get government contract pricing, and we actually realized a bit of a savings here, too, because of selecting 2014 models instead of 2015 models.
Okay, understood. Thank you. All right. And any other questions? All those in favor of the award of bids as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Then, next item on our agenda is ordinance number 2314. This is second reading. This is the setting or changing of the EMS rates. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2314.
So approved.
Is there a second?
No.
Either way.
I'm a little anxious.
It works, we knew what you meant.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Mr. Spees. All right, Mr. Tillman?
All right, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, changing the rates for emergency medical services. I read this in its entirety at our last meeting. The only change was that suggested by Councilwoman Mitchell with regard to mileage, and there's a parenthetical added, per mile, after that word in the left-hand column, with regard to the current $11.80 per mile rate, which is being raised to $13 for residents and $13.50 for non-residents.
That was the only change?
Correct. And it's my understanding that if passed, this would become effective immediately.
Are there questions?
Actually, there is one about the immediacy of that. Is there, Chief, is there lead time with our billing company, or are they set to go with this?
It's my understanding that they're ready to go, and, and they're waiting for council approval.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, if I may, there will be a short lag because of training our personnel on making sure we correctly, we, we, they don't, they don't know the, they don't know the rates, but we correctly tell them how to annotate the patient care report to make sure that we're dotting all the i's and crossing the t's so that our, our citizens are getting the biggest benefit from their insurance.
Right, mainly for those things that are added at the bottom that we didn't previously charge for.
That's correct. Because, because there'll be some training, the EMS billing company has already scheduled, we've already scheduled that training to come in, pending tonight's outcome, to come in and give us that additional training. Also to do some refresher training on what Mr. Spees had talked about as it relates to the medical necessity documentation. So we're, we're, it's, it's, we do it regularly anyway. This is just a cause for us to get back with our EMS billing company to help us and train our providers.
Is it possible that when, I know there's forms that you use to record patient care that have a lot of information on there. I don't know where you are in your stock on those, but maybe when they're reprinted, that some of those things are added on there as checkboxes so that they can?
Yeah, generally, we don't have stock because it's all done electronically now. So there's no paper. The patient care tablets that we have, the patients actually sign electronically right on the tablets and, and, but all of those are easily modifiable, so we can make sure that we're, that we're 100% correct.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 2314, please signify your support by saying aye. Chair votes aye. Two items. We do have one request for public comment, but before we get to that, I just want to provide the statement out from our closed session, which preceded the open session of council this evening. Council discussed strategy and details and received an update regarding a legal case in which the city is involved, and that was a publicly posted closed session that occurred before this open session. We also have one request for public comment. I'll invite Ms. Sarah Rain forward. Ms. Rain? Good evening.
Well, I'm here to talk about First Saturday again. We're having a launch party on March 7th at Headquarters Live to raise some startup funds. Tickets are $20 in advance, $25 at the door. We've got Lewis and Clark, Chris English Band, and The Larks playing. We're also going to have a chance auction, which is the same thing as a Chinese auction, and a 50/50 raffle. And we're going to have a few other, you know, little fun things going on inside the launch party, so we're asking that everybody please get tickets. They're available, I have them. They're also available at Main Roots, Rady Joe's, and the Chamber of Commerce. $20 in advance, $25 at the door. And, you know, we, we're really looking for the community's support in this launch party because we, we're only going to ask the community for money once. Everything else is going to be free. So we really appreciate if everybody would come out and support us. Any questions?
Could you repeat the date?
It's March 7th.
And the time?
4 to 7 PM.
March 7th, 4 to 7.
Yes. Oh, here, I'll give you this little.
That's at Headquarters Live?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
And we're also going to reveal at the party our lineup for the season.
Okay. And can you remind us when the, when the first, First Saturday is?
It's the first Saturday in April.
In April, okay. Great.
And things are really moving along. You know, it's, we're getting a lot of support, so a lot of people coming out and helping us out, so thank you for all of your support.
Absolutely. Great event. So, March 7th, 4 to 7 PM, Headquarters Live. Tickets can be picked up from you or at Main Roots?
Main Roots, Rady Joe's.
Rady Joe's. Or the Chamber, okay. Thank you so much. Anything else from council for the good of the order? All right. Hearing none. We are adjourned. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.